It's 11:34.
Bad.
Good job.
Let's get started. Agenda briefing.
All right, so just good item number five, which is the, there's several public hearings on the county-wide planning authority, this county-wide planning authority. First item is with the city of Largo, it's a map amendment. 7.2 acres, this was unanimously recommended. Item number six is 1.74 acres in safety harbor from residential low medium to semi-public, public. That, let's see. And forward to Penellas, this was the one that was deferred previously, is that right, Jake?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we guess that one. Okay, so what do you mean from both points? So this will, we have to...
This is a public works, I just met with, what, yesterday, it's a public works project or building, and they just wanted to make sure that they had reached out to the public about this particular thing.
Oh, okay, and that's reason was deferred from last...
That's the reason it was deferred.
But now it's...
But it's on the...
So it's on for our...
For Penellas, our next meeting.
Oh, okay, because it's, yeah.
Item number seven, this is with the city of Parkin Springs, this is existing single-family resident, they're going to split it and build a second single-family unanimously recommended. Item number eight is the city of Safety Harbor, 25 acres. This is currently vacant property purchased by the city with the intent of keeping the property as a natural site for their public home preserve. Item number nine is 1.62 acres in Safety Harbor. They're making an activity center, this is, I'm assuming it related to their downtown.
It is.
Yeah, it is. And then item number 10, I've asked, I actually sent Wit, because I'd like for him to be there on this, this is all of the county-wide rules and plan strategies, this is the first public hearing for all of the various changes that they're recommending. Under the Board of Commissioners. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, under the Board of Commissioners, the first item is a petition to vacate a right-of-way. Staff is recommending denial, they did attempt to reach an agreement and couldn't, and so this is on, and the recommendation is that it be denied. Item number 12, resolution with Safety Harbor for those amendments to the downtown redevelopment plan.
Did you say Safety Harbor?
Correct.
St. Pete.
It's St. Pete, it says on number 22.
Oh, item number 12. And then item number 13 is a resolution to extend the existence of St. Pete's In-Town West redevelopment area.
Oh, well, I must not have the...
I think it got updated and discussed again.
I know, and my big idea is that I can bring up...
Oh, okay, do I have the correct one?
Yes, you do.
I just want to make sure.
You do.
I give you on an old one.
No.
I'm sorry, Ron, I didn't have the same.
Thank you.
Can we get a little more back, I mean, a little more presentation on this one?
Yes.
On the entire?
Yeah, yes. So the county attorney's office is actively working on this, and so I'll let you, if you can kind of explain what we're doing here, this is a resolution, this will need to come back to you, and so...
The city took action, I think it was back about mid-August, to come to the county and ask that we undertake certain approvals of certain items that they wanted to bring forward. I will tell you, what gave rise to the urgency of their request were some changes in state law that were taking effect October 1st. We got with the city attorney, decided that we really didn't need to get everything done prior to October 1st, which kind of took away a little bit of the urgency, but we did want to go ahead and bring forward, and again, you know, I was in discussions with the city attorney, and they asked that we did go ahead and move forward and approve just the extension of the plan itself. So the plan is going from, I think it would have expired sometime next year, we are extending it, I think it's in, and I can tell you the date is in here.
2032.
2032. It will coincide, as a result of your action, assuming you approve it, with the termination of the In-Town redevelopment area. So the purpose of this is to make the expiration of In-Town West consistent with the expiration of In-Town. The other things that you see mentioned here, that they went ahead and brought forward in the resolution, and again, it was a little bit rushed, just for legal reasons, these things aren't items that you could actually do at this point in time. For instance, you can't modify the tax increment contributions in this manner, you have to do it by ordinance. And we just didn't have enough time from August until now to get an ordinance drafted and proposed for public hearing and notice and all of those things. You have an ordinance on the books that dictates what the parties' respective contributions are. They're proposing that we reduce the county increment to zero on this. That's going to require the drafting and development of an interlocal agreement between the parties, which again, has not been taken care of yet. One of the things that they asked was, and what you all do with the CRAs and the county, what you've done with all of them to date, because you're a charter county, so you have greater authority over community redevelopment areas than a non-charter county does, what you all have generally done is done a limited delegation authority to the cities. So they can undertake all the actions under Chapter 163, that the powers that they're given under the Redevelopment Act, but we sort of keep oversight of those actions and have them come back to us with plan modifications and things of that nature because of the fact that we're contributing, you know, a good bit of the tax increment in that area. They're proposing to zero out our contribution and have therefore asked for the delegation of all of those powers, and our conversations were to the effect of, once we can get our contribution down to zero, then that will be the appropriate time for the county commission to undertake that request. So that's just a little bit of background on some of the requests that are in here and why we deem them to not be timely, and why we went ahead and just put as a comfort to the city in there in the resolution, your direction to staff to work with them to bring those items back as soon as possible.
So what's the urgency of doing this as opposed to just waiting to do it all at once as an ordinance?
Again, I spoke with staff there, and they requested that we did go ahead and extend the date, just to make it consistent with the In-Town CRA. I just had that conversation yesterday, and they did ask that we go ahead, so it was already geared up, so we decided to go ahead and leave it on here, just again, to simply extend the date to make them match up.
Is this the one the city said they weren't going to have that too for real, years ago?
No, I do not believe so. I think that was, it was a different one in the downtown area, it was not In-Town or In-Town West. Bayboro maybe?
I thought that it was all of them except for the Midtown, they weren't going to extend any of them. And the reason that this was different was that they were extending the date without the money.
My understanding...
So that they lock in the CRA plan, is what I assume is why...
And my understanding, and I think that we'll have planning staff and probably some third person who can answer this question, my basic understanding is that the In-Town, if you look at the maps, it kind of, the In-Town West, I apologize, that is what's before you, sort of kind of wraps around the In-Town and more specifically the Tropicana Field Site. So I believe this is pretty, I believe this is integral to the city's plans to redevelop that site.
Can we get that whole map again about where all their, as part of this?
Just want to get a conversation. And you'll have CR staff there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, having a map of all of their CRAs would be really helpful, just to make sure that we're clear.
And this one's contiguous to In-Town, it's right there.
This is not, this is not the dome site itself, this is the site that the land that wraps around it?
Correct. Correct, the dome itself is in the In-Town area.
Yeah, that's in a different...
And that's the one, they keep in mind, I think it was a year or so ago, that you all extended and increased your contribution in the In-Town by $75 million specifically for the Tropicana Field Site.
Not all of it. I'm sorry, that was a problem.
Well, it's, the action of the collegiate body was two of these.
I know, I know.
I'm sure. Joel, when did you say under this proposal, our county's contribution goes to zero?
It will, we need to bring back an interlocal agreement, but I think that their proposal was to go ahead and zero out, and Jake, I don't know whether you have better, on what would have been the expiration date?
The expiration date, the planned expiration date at this time is next November, basically a year away. And with the state law, like she said, we had to make, they thought they had to go real quick, we actually were thinking we had, but they worked out, we don't. So this is why we have more time to work through this and obviously get back and get into the details, as opposed to looking at an interlocal agreement real quick. We were asking for a whole lot more information as well, and not as much was coming, we still had questions.
So Jake, you said the planned expiration date was November 2020?
November 2020.
And November 18th.
At that, at that time, our amount goes to zero.
Here is the...
The proposal now would be...
That's the city's.
It would have gone away, all of it.
Correct, and they're wanting to extend, like, for the city's portion only.
Is what I request.
Correct.
So does ours still end?
Okay.
Ours would end.
Ours will be zeroed out, I think that the city's plan was that it would be zeroed out in what is currently the expiration date, November 2020, but that's a detail that will be worked out through the ordinance that we'll develop and bring back to, and the interlocal agreement with the city, that will all be spelled out with specificity in those two, those two instruments.
So the other question I had, so this, they want to extend it to 32 with no county contribution, but full delegation of all?
Correct, and keep in mind, under 163, I mean, I know that the amour of community redevelopment areas is that increment that you can dedicate to redevelopment activities, but keep in mind the statute itself and all of those powers, they give you additional powers that you might not otherwise have, just as a municipality or county, to undertake some of the activities that you would have spelled out in your redevelopment plan.
Yeah, I think it's, and if I could, Joel's correct, let's say they do the CRA redevelopment plan, if we're out of it entirely, and we're out of it entirely, just is the way I look at it, after spending their, their part, and is this an area that we might, that the board might want to say, well, let's look at some things, maybe traffic, you know, there's some things going on in the city that the commission may choose to have some role, not authority necessary, because even now it's an oversight.
Yeah, and I don't know, and again, I think your planning staff could answer some of this, I know they're all occupied, but the board is adjusting it right now.
I...
Correct. I don't have the answer to this, but I think there may be one or two other CRAs in the county where there is no increment.
There is.
And so you all might want to consider as a policy whether you are willing to just do a full delegation of all the powers under 163 where you have no contribution, because there are, St. Pete would not be the only one, maybe Bill can answer that one.
Well, there are definitely CRAs that do not have county contributions, but the other point I want to make with respect to delegating all those powers is that until such time as all the projects that are part of what we have contributed to to date are completed, I don't think it's necessarily a good idea for us to delegate those powers until those projects have been completed and all of our tech dollars have been spent.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
And I know the write-up in here, and Bill might be able to answer this more fully, speaks to they're not having that a lot of funds generated within the In-Town West until just recently, so I don't know the extent to which county dollars might be tied up in projects that are either underway or proposed.
So there is either projects in that plan or activities that would not be allowed, or would not be traditionally allowed outside of a CRA that they want to do, right? I mean, I'm just trying, that's the logic of why, right?
That's my understanding, and again, you know, there is a benefit to having a CRA in place, even if you don't have the increment, because you do get some additional powers under state law that you may not otherwise have.
Right, I'm just trying to...
That's correct.
...end the narrative of it, that's all.
Absolutely.
I have a question. If we could, when we get those different CRAs mapped out for us, could you also possibly just have a little table that shows the increment that they are getting in each of those, and if there's any special, just any special, I just want to get context when we have these com, it seems like we always focus on one, and then there are some ramifications. And the other thing is, is that, you know, the state has been, is looking at sniffing around CRA issues, and to the extent that we give up control of something like that, I think will come back to hurt us at the state level. I don't, I'm really uncomfortable giving that back, giving up that control that the state has given to us, and this, because there's that conversation that we just don't feel like we have any kind of, not us, but there's no control of that issue, so I'd hate to give it up.
And you all are in a unique position again, because you're a charter county, and I will tell you, I had a recent conversation with one of my counterparts in a non-charter county, and they have a very different view of CRAs than we do, because the municipalities can basically do whatever they want, enforce the counties to contribute 95 percent. So it's a very different playfield, I'll say, in a non-charter county. They have a very different perspective.
Yeah. Well, I would have two, and I've got one right now, just hearing about it.
You're a charter county, don't worry about that, unless they change the state laws.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, they're up to their magic tricks.
All right. Okay, we've got several different reports, we've got reports, we've got reports received or filing. If you have those, if you have any questions, you can certainly give me a call. Down item number 20, well, this is the infamous dayjacks painting that's been delayed several times and is now on finally for approval. Well, I usually get notified about a day before that it's not, so hopefully this time it's ready for approval.
Why did it switch to the consent? It was, it's been on, hasn't it been on the other one, on the regular?
Well, we had, because we had those other...
The other item?
Yeah, it's just, it's a standard, yeah, it's just a standard agreement, so, and I figured they gave you enough kind of an airport update, I put it on the regular one because you wanted an airport update before, now we can just, but it doesn't make sense. Item 21 is a ranking affirmed with public sector budgeting, so Phil gets a new budgeting software.
We all get a new budgeting.
It's not my personal toy.
Yeah, and he stays up at night, you know, because I'm playing with a new toy. Question, was there a question?
Yeah, what, what number was that, I don't remember?
That's 21.
Oh, that's item number 21, I'm sorry.
So I have some notes on here, but you mentioned somewhere, I think, that you use, what, three, four, five different software packages now to develop the budget?
There are five primary sources that we use right now for software.
Is it going to replace all of those?
That's the intent.
And Hyperion?
I'm not going to say it's going to get done within the first year, but we're going to move aggressively in that direction.
And so Hyperion goes away when? I mean, when will this be implemented?
If we had been able to get this forward to six months ago, then I would be able to feel confident saying that Hyperion would be gone for FY21 budget development. Looking at the timing now, that's not going to be feasible, so we're going to have some hybrid that we'll end up doing for FY21 and FY22, our intent would be Hyperion as the alternative.
Well, you need a different skill set in terms of OTI or BTS support for this, or is it kind of plug and play?
It's a cloud-based system, and it's pretty intuitive, it's a lot easier to use based on experience that some of our budget analysts have had in other places before they came to Penellas and using the same software package. There's a lot of confidence that we'll be able to take this on and actually be able to drive a lot more quickly and a lot more seamlessly, both ourselves and OMB, OTI, and then most importantly, the end users and the departments that have to use it, that's going to be part of a better experience for everybody.
Okay, thanks. Godspeed.
Thank you.
So, here, Madam Chair, now I'm getting a little off-kilter here with my agenda, because the one that Barbara just gave me, which was the update they did last night, on the old one, number 21, was the advertised for public hearing with the ordinance about the equine riding down...
Yeah, 20 was the budget, 21 is the worst.
Yeah, but now it's not.
Right now, 21 is the...
Is the...
Budget, it's the budget software.
Yeah, but where did the other one go? I don't see...
It's going to be under the reports, under various reports.
Oh, we're not having the resolution?
Yeah, there, so one of the limitations that we have, I'd like to raise that, is there's no requirement for the commission to vote to go out for a public hearing, so I'm going to do it as a report, and then we'll, we'll add, do the advertisement, so you'll hold a public hearing on the 21st or 22nd, whenever it is, but you don't have to vote, put something on. We're inconsistent on how we apply it, we apply it, we ask you to do it for this, but in most other areas, we don't, we don't ask for a vote to place something on for a public hearing, and so we just change it all.
It's not a legal requirement, it's more of a, we've always done it this way issue.
We're trying to be consistent.
Okay, as long as we keep it going, moving forward.
Yeah, the idea is that I'll announce it, but we'll not actually have two separate votes.
Okay, I agree with that.
Would that apply to ordinances as well?
Yeah, this is a proposed ordinance.
Okay.
The equine.
What if, how do you, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So you're doing that...
As a report.
Yeah, how do you get our input that we want to have it for a public hearing?
That's a great point.
Usually it's the one-on-ones, you know, this one was, like, this one, we did a one-on-one, obviously.
I'm just thinking the old way may give us an opportunity for you to hear if there's consensus or not, which I get, the one-on-ones kind of give you that.
It's not really a big deal either way, and I'm okay, you know, having that vote, I just want to be consistent, because we do it with some ordinances and not with others. And so I just asked a question, I'm like, why do we do it with citizens?
Well, I've been thinking about it for like three minutes, so, yeah, but I just, I just see a potential there for...
And keep in mind on more controversial ordinances, you would be giving two opportunities to have a lot of input from citizens, which maybe what you want, I don't know, but just what kinds of... Well, either some of the animal control ordinances that you've passed, that you've adopted in the past, that would be two opportunities for a two or three-hour citizen commentary.
Well, we've already had a lot of public input on this equine issue, and because we haven't done anything, they kind of sort of think it's gone away, so...
Well, actually, I mean, Kelly's had direct conversations with them, so I think they're going to know, and we're going to notify them that the public hearing is going to be on the 22nd. I think the idea here was, we don't want to have two public hearings on this matter, let's, let's do it on the 22nd. I'll do it as a report that we're, you know, going to have this, and then we, away we go. That way everybody knows when to come and express their opinion. If you'd rather for us to do it the other way, we can certainly do that.
There is an advertisement in the paper as well that notifies the public that the actual public hearing is happening on the 22nd, so as far as getting the word out, there is, that stuff's still happening.
I just, I felt a little heartburn on the transparency, you know, it might open us up to more discussion, but I just, not sure we want to change, change that decision.
I think it can be confusing for the public, if we're just announcing that a public hearing is going to be two weeks from now, as opposed to today, so there's that, but I have a little issue with, it's almost like concealed and sort of... Flies under the radar. What we would have done before was... It's not an agenda item, so for a lot of people, it can just fly under the radar. You just, I mean, I get it.
Yeah, and I guess that's the question, whether you want to have that, I think what the intent was is, this is when the public hearing is going to be, rather, because some people come to the first date thinking that's when their voice, you know, and so we, but that's not really the public hearing, although you would listen to them if we had it as an agenda item, so, however you want to do it.
So you were just planning to do a presentation, giving us the...
I was going to say that this, this item will be advertised, and a public hearing will be on October...
That's all you're doing?
21st, it's got an announcement, and that way it's clear to the public that we're going to have a public hearings on this date, on this topic, you know, so, you know...
Yeah, so Commissioner, what, I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused here, what would we have done differently?
It'd be an agenda item, it says...
Oh, it says a public hearing is coming?
You would actually vote?
I agree with you, I do, I think we should still do it.
How about as we compromise, under county administrator reports, we listed, I mean, as a, so it's definitely on the agenda for transparency reasons that the county administrator was going to mention that we are having a public hearing.
That would be okay.
And then we still vote on that item?
You wouldn't vote.
No, no, we wouldn't vote, but it would clearly then be on paper for the public to see that this is going to be... Is that a good...
Yes, that's a great compromise, thank you, Commissioner Seale, although Charlie's still thinking about it.
Yeah. Is that right?
But the idea is that you don't want to have two hearings, is that a public input? And by having it just as an announcement vote on the announcement, that it, that it would open up the opportunity for discussion, is that...
Well, I think where he's going is, you know, if you have it as a agenda item, as the authority to advertise, and we have to vote on it, someone seeing it might think it was their opportunity to come and be heard that night.
So for instance, we would, if normally we have it on as an agenda item for you to vote to set the public hearing, we wouldn't be prepared to have a presentation on a topic, we would have that for the public hearing. So if people were confused, they could, they would be coming in, and we would, and they would just, we would hear them, they could certainly speak on it, but we wouldn't have a presentation and stuff until the actual public hearing date.
So if the idea is not to be confusing to the residents versus potential having to hear comments, that, I think it's two different things. And I, and I'm, I don't know, I kind of like the idea of us voting on a public hearing, regardless of what we anticipate will happen. I mean, that shouldn't be the driver.
Well, anybody can come speak at our meeting, or the public to be, citizens to be heard, or whether or not, if they see that on the agenda as the county administrator report, they can come and speak.
But I like putting it on there with the date that public hearing will be set for.
Yes.
You got to start it?
Well, because I had made notes about, I wanted to make comment about something that I saw, and we're not going to have it as a regular item, we'll just save it for whatever we do.
Save it for Tuesday.
Item number 22 is an adjustment, there will be surplus items and, so, declaring surplus, and I do have an update from Bill, we had a question about surplus items for nonprofits, I'll go over that when we get time to meet.
Item number 23 is a new lawsuit, this is a personal injury lawsuit resulting from an automobile accident.
Item number 24 is contract with state Florida Department of Health for the operation of Florida Department of Health, Penellas County, $6.2 million. This is for the portion that does the community health disease control, primary care services, and the school nurse program.
And adoptive services?
Is that under this contract, or this?
Actually, no, that I believe is on the other one.
I was asking this question because I was trying to define, I know we give more money than this, so we have two different contracts with them, and so, why, I don't know what are they doing.
It came with a different...
Do you have a question?
No, I didn't know.
Okay, next item is first option original amendment number one to the agreement with Bay Care Health Systems for the health program and healthcare for the homeless. Item number 26 is amendments number 2 and 3, purchasing authorization, this is to expand the cell program, this is for consumer protection and for animal services. Item number 27 is a construction agreement with CSX Transportation for crossing service replacement on 54th Avenue. And this is our responsibility by, Rahim is shaking and said, yes.
Yes.
We're responsible for all the crossings that are on our county roads with CSX.
Item number 28 is declaring a key of property as surplus and authorizing the sale, this is in Parkin Springs, this is kind of convoluted, but it was an old, old piece of land that has no value for the county, however, there was issues, the person built on the property, so now it's kind of a cleanup, but they're paying for the value of what we had in an independent...
So now it's kind of a cleanup, but they're paying for the value of it. We had an independent assessment done as to that value. Did we also move the lofty finds one?
Yes. I can explain that. The lofty finds one is going to be deferred, the lofty finds item is going to be deferred to a future meeting when we have the agreement with Dunedin as well.
Okay.
So we can bring both of those as companion items.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot about that. Item number 29 is contract for sale. This is for five parcels in the Dando Community to Development Communities of Tampa for affordable housing. And item number 30, six parcels to Habitat for, and then the Dando property, for affordable housing.
Do you know what the first one is going, are they going to build single-family homes or...
Yes, yes.
Single family or what?
Single family. It's a, it's another not-for-profit like Habitat. When we put out the RFP, they responded, and so we worked with those up.
Right, but they're both going to be single families.
Question, again, I, I, on these, these properties where we do provide land like this, my understanding of the Habitat model was that when somebody obviously qualifies and becomes the owner, be simple owner of the, of the property, and they go to sell five years, 10 years later, that there is a kind of a cap on the amount of equity that they can take in an effort to keep the property's values down going forward. Is that, is that right? Or did I hear something, I thought I heard something the other day that somebody was saying, well, if they go to sell, then we kind of let them out of our agreement, and they, they can, I just...
It's basically on the amount of time that they own the property, but go ahead.
And I'll check on that. I'm not sure. I think it is 10 years, but don't hold me to that. That if you sell within the first 10 years, there are certain levels. After the 10 years, you can get equity out of the house, and it does move forward. So you could be, if the market changes drastically, I guess it could go, quote, above affordable. Because they don't have a lure on these other than the 10-year timeline.
Yes, so, so these properties, I mean, that we, that we're trying to make as affordable housing, it's not just for today. I mean, the idea is that it would be affordable going forward. And I always thought that there was a cap on the amount of equity that they could take regardless of whether it was five years, 10 years, 20 years, or 30 years.
Don't believe, so not in, not in the single family that Habitat does. In our apartments and those things, there, all that's true.
So there's not a mechanism to keep them affordable in perpetuity?
That's really what I, that was my understanding that was, and that may have been my misunderstanding. So I just wanted clarification on that.
Well, let's have clarity on, you know, because we're obviously looking at selling one to the CDC of Tampa.
Yeah.
What I would say, in my opinion, is if they are, if we are giving the land to, if we were giving the land to an organization, and it was in our land trust, then our policy should apply. But if they're buying the land, I don't know how we tie their hands to keep it affordable forever, but, yeah. But we can certainly find out what their policies are.
I'll find, we can find out exactly. I don't remember the exact thing, Commissioner, but...
If we're selling the parcel at fair value, or we're going to grow it at a discount, or...
Yeah, they got some sort of a discount, I will tell you, but it's not very much. But it is, when you look at affordable housing, you've got affordable housing, but this is also an area where we're trying to bring the whole, you know, the neighborhood up.
Yeah.
And so this is where the folks that buy them ultimately end up with equity, so that they might move on to something else. Because they're a certain size. They aren't, you know...
I get that. That was that partial equity. I get that part. I didn't realize that at some point, though, it becomes completely theirs, like a reg, a regular household.
And I may not be correct.
Let us get, okay, do some warm engagement on that.
So to that end, I'm just now looking at the rankings for the 41 parcels in Danesville. And CVT Capital LLC was ranked number one. So what happened to them?
That, I believe, was the ones that were at market. This is where you asked about, did they get a break? We did try to sell some at market.
Okay.
And that was the company that was going to buy those to be sold at market rate as opposed to an affordable rate. My understanding was the price per lot was higher for them. They didn't like it, so they got out of it.
And so they were for profit.
They were a for-profit developer. We're trying, as, as always, we try to get a mix when we're doing these in the community. Danesville's got some very nice lots, you know.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get on that.
Item number 31 is an agreement with Manhattan Construction for the Design and Build Professional Services for the St. Petersburg Justice Center for Consolidation Project.
We, we, we've defined all of the funding for this, right? This, right, this is, yeah, this is a budget project?
Okay.
And it's all, all right, all right, great.
Item number 32 is the First Amendment to a Lot of Agreement Between the Board of Commissioners and Sunstar and Logisticare. This is...
They're our broker to help us get reimbursed for non-emergency transports?
Yes.
Is that coming down? I mean, non-emergent, because we have that other program that's available for non-emergency, right?
Plan?
Yeah. This is our plan that people can...
I can't say it's going down, to be honest with you. So something we keep a close eye on. Reimbursements aren't as great as they used to be due to, due to this.
But you were, you had, yeah, you had had a program that you were advertising to our residents.
Right, and we still have that.
Okay.
It's still available. We push it out. Marketing does that. I know during the holidays, we do a big push.
Is there a, a sense that that's successful? Are people taking advantage of that, or...
Yeah, I would say people are taking advantage of it, but probably not as much as we would like.
Because that would, in theory, knock this down a little bit, it might.
And there is a marketing area that we're going to be working on for this next season.
Thanks.
Item 21 is, I'm sorry, 32, 3? I don't know where that came from. No idea. Change order number one, how about that? I had a one in there somewhere. This is with Keystone Excavator for the North County Sublime Project. This is for them to be able to put that grant in. So it's increasing the project?
Nine months.
Are they, are they, is the state contributing to that?
The state, the state's paying for it.
Yeah, that was what we approved on the last agenda.
Well, that's what I was trying to remember.
Yeah, that was, that was the, the delay was because of the state wanting to put in the grant, and we just wanted to carry it out. So this is the contract amendment.
Delayed is delay, or the...
Yeah.
I know, that's a side note. Item number 34, it's a change order number one. This is actually a cancellation of a contract. They started where they were going to do a modification, and they were determined that they just need to replace the tank that they got into it. So this is canceling that contract.
Under item number 35, this is one of the items that is in the folder with the confidential settlement. I would encourage you to, you have any questions to ask me outside of this setting. We are recommending you approve staff's recommendation.
Question. Can I ask Rahim a general question that has nothing to do with the case itself, but just a general approach?
Sure.
To, let's just say, for example, we have our public sidewalk areas that aren't even. Do we have programs out there that, that we identify those areas? Do we, are we very good and aggressively go out and try to identify?
So our level of service on sidewalks is the five-year inspection-based program. So, and they, basically in payments terms is every five years, you go look at the sidewalk and take corrective or preventative measures once you've inspected. That's the level of service we are providing.
Does that strike you as, it's a good, good policy, that five years?
It's much better than where we were.
Oh, thank you.
Under item 36, this is a request to file a suit in code enforcement action. We'll be filing an action for an injunction. And again, 37 is a case that is in the folder that hopefully you all got to read with a confidential memorandum relating to a settlement, and we are recommending that you approve staff's recommendation. And with your indulgence, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up today, just under my general court of the agenda. The first of which, and these are not necessarily things I wish to bring up on Tuesday, although the first one is. I don't know whether all of you saw it, and I had some email exchanges about another code enforcement issue that a news story over the weekend made reference to a property with $800,000 in fines on it from the magistrate. We have prepared a lawsuit to file. If the Board's pleasure, I can put this on and ask for authority to file this suit on Tuesday. We can list it. I think that Sue has already talked to Joe to see if we could just get it listed under County Attorney Reports. We are prepared to go ahead and file an injunction on that case as well. So with the Board's indulgence, I will ask for authority to file suit in that case on Tuesday, rather than waiting to the second meeting in October.
Did you send out what that case is?
It's a code enforcement case. I believe it's mostly a lot of overgrowth and trash and, and things, things of that nature. This is what it is. Yeah, this is the one that was in the, in the news before.
That's another thing to send us the picture.
I sent, I sent, I think I sent you an email.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, and I do want to kind of comment on that, because it's, we've seen news handled differently on different cases. Some supporting their code enforcement efforts, and others, the city getting hammered over their code enforcement efforts. And, you know, and it's kind of inconsistent. You're kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't. And I will tell you, in these types of things, the, one of the reasons that I sent that out to you is I wanted to show you the staff is more than willing to work with them if we can come into compliance. So it's, we're never collecting 800,000. We know we're not collecting 800,000, you know, and, but, but the, because of, it's the value of the property. What we're trying to do is get the person's attention to clean it up, you know? And that's not fair to the neighbors. And so we're looking at some policies, and, you know, we're probably going to bring those back to you to modify it. You know, do we cap it at a certain amount? Because it doesn't make sense to just continue to do, you're never going to collect it anyway. So, you know, how do we do that? And so we're looking at that. We're looking at how others do that. And so we're going to bring back some policies. But I did want to kind of show you that, you know, the idea is compliance. And when you get property owners that simply just will not comply, and they have homestead, well, your, your options are limited, you know, and it's difficult. And I, I just went out with code enforcement, because I wanted to see that. I wanted to see how they're dealing with that. And, you know, they're as frustrated as anybody. They, and they're trying, begging them, and then the neighbors are begging them to make them do something.
And injunctions, we have found in the past, we've not done a tremendous number here recently, but injunctions can be a very effective tool, because I know that you all have talked a lot about foreclosures. We did the foreclosure registry, but as Barry mentioned, when you have a homestead property, that's not an option. But more importantly, a foreclosure is an action to collect a debt. An injunction is an action to compel someone to perform an action. So injunctions have been very effective in the past, because once we get a court order telling the property owner to, you know, comply with whatever code it is in issue, if they do not do it, the courts will let us go in there and do whatever it is necessary to come into compliance and then leave the property. So from just a strictly compliance perspective, it's a very effective tool. So I suspect you'll see some more of these coming forward. And again, with your indulgence, I will go ahead and ask for a court on Tuesday, so that we can get moving on this particular case. I also wanted to mention, just briefly, an issue that came up at the last, one of the last presentations we had in here in regard to affordable housing. Somebody raised the question of whether the economic development ad valorem exemption that we put into place within the last few years was something that could be applied to affordable housing. It is not.
It is not.
And we also, we also looked into some other statutes that are out there that do provide some tax relief for affordable housing. None of them will apply. They're really more geared towards nonprofits that own properties. So maybe in the context that there's public ownership or nonprofit ownership, those are things that may or may not apply. But just some of the options that we were talking about, in particular, the economic development, would not work. But there are some other statutory schemes out there that are just strictly for affordable housing. I can give you some more information on that.
Okay.
We did correspond with you all about a date for a shake meeting on the opioid litigation. So hopefully you all have that on your calendar. I will be making pursuant to the public records law, a more formal announcement at one of your open county meetings, asking you all to give me advice on a shake meeting. That's a strictly statutory notification that I will take care of at a subsequent meeting. But again, I hope that you all have that on your calendar. I believe it's October 17th at noon is when we set that. We do have a workshop that day. We went ahead and scheduled it for a time certain. Jim Magazine, who has been our liaison to the consortium of lawyers that are representing us in that litigation, is available and will be joining us that day.
Madam Attorney, may I ask you, just for planning purposes, please, at our meeting on the 17th, after our workshop, how long do you think that will take?
I would not anticipate the shake meeting taking longer than an hour. I know that when I spoke with Barry about this, there are some other topics on your agenda that day. So I think that the ultimate completion for your schedule that day may depend on some of the other topics, so.
Yeah, we should, we should be fine, because I'm going to add across that next. You're going to put Form Based Code, and they did a really good job of making it real interesting.
The last, we'll see.
Yes.
It sounds more exciting than epic, so, doesn't it?
Yeah, I followed it, and so they actually did a really good job. So, but anyway, that's what you were talking about, is we don't have other big topics on there, so you should be fine in terms of...
And I wouldn't anticipate us taking longer than an hour at the shake meeting. So ideally, you can be finished up by 2:00. The last thing I wanted to mention to you, I know that you all are aware of the follow-up opinion that we got in the Second DCA on the Pasco County Tax Immunity Case. We, and again, we can have a full discussion about this if you all would like. I, I do believe that unless you all direct us otherwise, that we will follow through with the appeal. Up to the Supreme Court, the Second District Court of Appeals certified a question to the Supreme Court. It is not mandatory that the Supreme Court undertake that appeal, but it is discretionary. We did engage the appellate specialists that handled the Richmond Group case for us, and had them read that opinion and give us their opinion on whether the general, more general sovereign immunity language that's present and remains present in the opinion, even the modified opinion, whether they felt it was problematic, and they agree that it is problematic. From a legal perspective, you'll hear us talk about sometimes about dicta in cases, which is when judges might just talk sort of off the cuff about issues. But when that dicta doesn't go to the basis of their opinion, it is not something that you can rely on in precedent in future cases. The appellate specialists told us they did not believe the commentary about sovereign immunity was dicta, and that it was a legitimate basis for somebody to use as an argument in a general sovereign immunity case. I will tell you, we talked with the Sheriff's General Counselor, who thought there was a very strong argument that we could limit that language to in rem or, in rem cases, or cases that strictly relate to real property. Our specialist thought otherwise. I can tell you, just yesterday, I bumped into a local attorney who had read the case and basically said to me they were planning on using that case in every sovereign immunity case they had from here on out, claiming that local governments don't have sovereign immunity. So I do find it to be problematic. We are going to bring this up tomorrow. There is a monthly phone call that the Florida Association of County Attorneys hosts on the first Friday of every month, and we will be bringing this case up in that forum tomorrow. You know, we're still kind of taking a look at it in legal arguments and trying to assess, you know, what the impacts may be out there. We may be asking FACA to entertain a request to come on as an amicus and write a brief. So that's basically a friend of the court type brief. And if we do go that route, we will be asking them to limit it not to the tax issue, but to the sovereign immunity issue that could impact all of us. You know, we sit around in my office, and of course, we're lawyers, so we kind of speculate about the parade of horribles that could happen from things like this. And, you know, on our own property up in Pasco County, Pasco County's schoolchildren visit that property all the time. And if we lack immunity, and there's a problem there, well, then we're on the hook for it, and it's not capped at $200,000. So there's a lot of implications out there that we do think we're, we do continue to think we're in taking it forward. So unless you all want to have a more full discussion or give me direction, otherwise that is the direction we're going, we're going to go. that is the direction we're going, we're going to go.
So which court will you go to at this point?
The Supreme Court of Florida, who is two justices down right now. But two of the brand new appointments have already been elevated to the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, federal court in Atlanta. So there are two justices down. I expect by the time this work gets way through that we would have a full court.
And how long will you think it will?
Appeals take quite a while. I would expect probably a year and a half to two years by the time you've briefed it and every, every side's had an opportunity to brief it, you've had an oral argument, and then the court has had an opportunity to write an opinion. And, you know, that can take anywhere from six months to, you know, well beyond that. I know a case out of the third DCA we were monitoring that had to do with the plastic bag, the plastic bag ban down there. The court had that case for over 18 months before they issued an opinion, so it's hard to tell.
I guess my question, though, so in the meantime, is there something that we need to be protecting ourselves?
Well.
And I mean, I give you, for instance, of, you know, maybe we no longer allow the Pasco children to access the property. If we have fears about, you know, the fact that we could be sued and we, you know.
We will continue to assert our sovereign immunity certainly in any case that arises and, you know, do our very best to distinguish that case as a real property, taxation issue, specifically a taxation issue. You know, it may be something that risk management can weigh in on, whether there are additional insurance policies or things that we could, that we could buy to cover, but it's really a risk aversion issue. We will continue to assert sovereign immunity across the board.
Why can't we have some, you know, I remember when my children didn't go to public school, but even at that, whenever there was a field trip or they were going anywhere, I had paperwork I had designed for my child about accepting responsibility and, because the school, you know, was trying to hau their responsibilities, so why can't we do that with the school board up there?
Well, I imagine that they do most everything they can to deal with liability issues just for the school board, so. And I don't want to get overly focused on, you know, students going to our property up there. I just use that as an example.
I know, you said it as an example. I was casting a wider net in essence to make sure that we don't have cases where we could find ourselves in an illegal quiet wire, you know.
Well, I mean, really.
We should be protecting ourselves in the meantime if you show deemed that it's necessary or risk deems it's necessary.
Well, I'd say it's a risk right now. To what extent it's a great risk, it's unknown at this point. I mean, we have this case, it's got troubling language in it. We have not seen it applied in this context yet, but it's certainly a possibility. You know, and again, every time a neighbor's travel out of the county, you know, it can be an issue because we're all in cars, and probably one of the more frequent cases that you see here, aside from trips on sidewalk, are motor vehicle accidents. So it's just, you know, again, I don't want to sound a wire bells. I just want to raise some of the issues that could arise as a result of the language in the case that's a little bit broader than we originally anticipated we would see in a taxation case.
Yeah, but don't they call that vicarious liability? So now you've mentioned it.
No, I mean, just me mentioning it here doesn't mean anything. And again, you know, initially, we didn't even really want to express what our concerns are for fear we would be planting the seed with private attorneys. The fact that one approached me yesterday that I'd never spoken to about the case and said, boy, oh, boy, we can't wait to use this case against you.
Well, that was a very nice.
Well, and that's not, that's my summary of the conversation. That was not the exact conversation.
Oh, you set them straight.
You know, it's good to have learning like that, to know that others are looking at it that way and that, you know, it is a case that we should be taking seriously, which is one of the reasons, you know, we don't, when you've, when you've dealt with a case for a really long time, you become close to it and you become a little, you know, you get a little bit of a tunnel vision because you've been looking at it in one certain way for many, many years now. And that's why we engaged outside counsel to take a look at it and give us a second set. We've kind of looked for some of these other data points, which on balance have told us there is reason to be concerned, and that's why, you know, we would look to take it forward.
Now, separate from the liability of this case, we, I did meet with this county administrator, you know, regarding this, and staffs were going to sit down and see if there are ways to work, you know, with them or what they really want. It's not really a money issue. They want access to the property, and is there a portion we can do something where it has to be a business case or not asking us to spend a bunch of money? And we said, well, let's sit down and take, you know, let's see what our mutual interest are or whatever. So we're going to, we're going to do that and then, you know, we'll come back to you. And I got to actually tour the property and enjoy it.
Yeah. It's a bunch of wild animals.
All right, you want someone out?
Okay, it's lunchtime.
The final thing that I just wanted to, so we have the, we have the transportation. We've been trying to find a date to bring all the transportation and have that discussion. We, and I think Della was working with her staff to try to target November the 12th. 17 for a variety of reasons was just too quick. I need some other additional pieces of information to have that good discussion, and basically there was no other date where we could get everybody together. So if, if you're okay, we'll put it at the work session that afternoon. We have a commission meeting that morning.
What's the date?
November the 12th. And so we have a commission meeting morning, or we would do it after that and go into a work session and have the transportation discussion at that time. And that gives us plenty of time to pull this information together. We're still, I mean, Rahim's still getting in information from the cities and things like that, so we're trying to finalize and pull that, pull that together. We just want to make sure we have all the information before we have this meeting.
There's still a lot being developed, I think, before we actually start taking anything on the road.
Though, this is just a first meeting, but we wanted to kind of summarize where we're at and everything, but I did want to have all the information in for that discussion. So if we're okay, we'll do that on the 12th. Where we go? Go ahead.
All right, so I guess we have a attorney meeting this, unless anybody's going to be bringing forward any transportation. Okay, then let's take a half hour break. That puts us at two minutes past one.
In the, in the conference room.
Okay.